Everybody got quiet, I'm like I'm giggling out loud again.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October 2nd, 2024. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, attending this meeting commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portions of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission's action on all of today's items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 18, 2024. Is there a motion?
So move Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Even though our staff got it right, the paper didn't.
Excellent. We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
I will note that we have received notice that Item 1.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24018 will be coming off the consent agenda for public hearing today. So item on the consent agenda is Item 1.2 Change of Zone 24023 for Diamond Enterprises from H3 Highway Commercial to I-1 Industrial on property generally located at 3501 West O Street. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
There are none.
If there is anyone wishing to speak on this consent agenda item, please stand and state that you are wanting to speak.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Edens.
Shelley? Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Consent agenda approves eight to zero.
We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall be given an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony, you have copies of documents or materials that you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or include in part of the record, please provide those to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
The first item is going to be Item 1.1, which was pulled off the consent agenda, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24018, to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, Request for Proposed Conservation Easement to Preserve, Protect, and Maintain Flood Storage and Natural Resources Within the Jamaica North Use Permit Boundary on Property Generally Located Northeast of South 14th and Saltillo Road. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
There are not.
Are there any expertise communications to, that took place or additional information learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
There are not.
Good afternoon. Ben Callahan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This up here, but this is regarding the conservation easement in the Jamaica North Use Permits. This is located along east of South 14th Street and north of Saltillo. Back in April of this year, you approved and then ultimately City Council with the change of zone annexation and a use permit at this property for the I-3 Industrial Park. So this is just following the conditions that were within that use permit as the area abutting Wilderness Park here, it's roughly 55 acres, was shown to become two future outlots with a conservation easement over them. So that's following that process now with the comprehensive plan being in conformance. And with that, there was just a condition on this approval as they're still working with watershed management on some minor modifications on the original document. So that was part of the conditions of approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ben, can you tell me why on the south end of that, that it jogs up and why that corner? Yes. Why that's not included?
That's not included in the use permit property.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Danae Calkowski, appearing today on behalf of FOG Limited Partnership. I'm just gonna maybe put up one additional map to show you that'll help orient you a little bit better. Right now, in the process of, you know, meeting the conditions of the use permit and working on a final plat. So 14th Street over here, so the area I have outlined in green is the area of the conservation easement. It's going to be platted into two outlots. With the eastern outlot is going to be gifted to the city and provide additional buffer for Wilderness Park. And then Outlet B is anticipated to potentially be a prairie wetlands and/or a forested wetlands bank. The client will be working with a core of engineers and maybe even state in Nebraska, they have a wetland mitigation bank to the north, about the potential for doing some additional wetland mitigation there and/or obviously to preserve and protect, you know, the flood plain, storage, and the flood prone area in this part of the development. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have. A lot of work, I think, has gone into this, and I think Adam's gonna speak to some of the conversations between the client and working with our neighbors out here. And you heard a lot about it too at the time we did the use permit, but just kind of moving forward with the next step.
Any other questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Okay, so we would like to hear testimony in support, please.
Hello, my name's Adam Hints, 1919 Prospect Street, Executive Director of Friends of Wilderness Park. Mostly just wanted to pull this off the consent agenda because all too often success is invisible. There's, there's a lot of good work that's happening in the city, and whenever something happens this wonderful, especially to benefit Wilderness Park, I want to make sure that we bring it up and raise it up and make sure that everybody understands how incredibly important it is to create these buffers for our sensitive natural areas like Wilderness Park or other places in Lancaster County. You know, whenever, you guys have a huge responsibility in terms of looking at each new project and understanding how it works, not just for humans, but also the nonliving community here in Lancaster County. So, working with CJ over many years, I think a couple of years now, with Kent Seacrest and them, it was an incredibly refreshing process in terms of being part of the conversation, right, at the very beginning, letting them know what our concerns and questions are and having those all addressed. Creating this amazing buffer in terms of adding more land to the park system and then also wetland to the west, just creates an absolute like home run in terms of creating sustainable development, technically. Also, you'll be getting an email from me here inviting you to hike. I do have maps of Wilderness Park. Hopefully you all have one of those, except I don't know if Brett ever got one. So, you don't have one yet? Okay, so great. So, yeah, so there's some maps for you all to have. One for you, I'll get an extra one for you too. But that's about it. Such a great process, and I just wanted to make sure that we raise this and celebrate this because all the life that's living in those places are really gonna appreciate the decisions we make. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Shelley, you'll get those to us. Are there any other testimony in support? Any testimony neutral or in opposition? Any staff questions? No? Okay. Applicant rebuttal? Okay, excellent. May I have a motion?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24018.
Second, Edens.
I was distracted by maps.
Excellent. Who would like to start?
I agree with Adam. This is a great win, but it doesn't surprise me because Seacrest and Calkowski has been very good in almost every effort that's brought before us to have considerable conversations with the, with the people either for or against whatever projects they're bringing. So I would congratulate all of them over the work they've done over the last couple of years.
I also am glad that Adam put this, took this off the consent in order to show the value of creating buffers around Wilderness Park. We've learned the hard way how this can affect us negatively if they're not in place, and this is a wonderful solution. And thanks to everyone that helped make this happen.
Okay, anyone else? I too agree with my fellow commissioners. It is great, and it has buffers, it has wetlands, it has a utility easement that'll be also used as a buffer. Very excellent done, excellently done development. So thank you, everyone. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
Let's continue our public hearing, Shelley.
Next item is Item 4.1A, Change of Zone 24018 from AG Agricultural District to H4 Highway Commercial District on approximately 15 acres of property generally located north of the intersection of O Street and Anthony Lane, associated with Item 4.1B, Special Permit 24030, to allow a planned service commercial development and associated waivers with up to 22,500 square feet of auto repair services and 90,000 square feet of mini warehousing in the H4 District on approximately 15 acres of property generally located north of the intersection, intersection of O Street and Anthony Lane. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these applications?
There are not.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
There are none.
Good afternoon. Steve Dush, City Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Shelley had indicated this is an application, a joint report was prepared for the zone change and the special permit for a planned service commercial area. The property is equidistant between the basically 84th and O, and then was it East Dominion Estates that y'all had seen about five months ago. So this is similar to that insofar as it's a zone change to H4 and then a special permit for the planned service commercial area. And what that, as you know, does is it refine some of the uses along that corridor. The site plan that was prepared as a part of this application proposes two distinct uses. One is for mini storage, 90,000 square feet, and the other one, I believe, is 22,000 square feet of auto repair services in this area. As you can see, the property that's parallel to O Street has a, has a considerable amount of utility conflicts located within that area. And so some of the waivers that were requested, one in particular for the setback to the LES substation, the applicant and staff worked with LES to determine that their original request for the waiver to reduce it was a little too shallow. And so instead of the five feet that they had originally requested, LES was fine with the 10 feet. The other waivers are typical customary for this type of a use relative to a zero setback to the outlots, which typically have their drainage. And then there is a provision for the allowance of a, of a sign, a center sign, serving both of these uses to have a zero setback, provided of course the utilities are fine with that location. This is, again, in a tier one priority A growth area, so there's development all around it. Staff has met with the applicant relative to some of the traffic comments. There's a condition in there that they'll comply with the comments that they had received. That's been worked out, as well as this will also have a zoning agreement that will be prepared and then forwarded on to the City Council. With that, staff recommends approval, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have questions? No, we're good. Thank you. May we have testimony from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Tim Gergen with Clark &amp; Anderson, representing the developer on this project. We have worked through with the city for past four months, and, go ahead, Kristy.
Give us your address.
Oh, 1010 Lincoln Mall, Suite 200.
Thank you.
Worked with the city and indot for access on O Street for the last four months and have come to a conclusion that we are in agreement with all the conditions and the zoning agreement. I have Brian here with the developer, Eustace Body Shop, who'd kind of just give a little brief summary of the use of this body shop here, this location. It's kind of a unique situation our world is coming to with electronic vehicles now.
I'm Brian with Eustace Body Shop, 8820 Amber Hill Court here in Lincoln. Eustace Body Shop has been in business, it's Nebraska based, for those who are familiar with Eustace, Nebraska, it's a small town. We have a total of eight shops. We moved into Lincoln about six years ago, and the needs are clear, I mean, for electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles and making sure that these vehicles are being repaired properly. So this provides an opportunity for us to focus on those repairs and have ample real estate to do so. Some of these vehicles require some specific needs in regards to space required. It's an ideal location, it just simply makes sense. So that's our goal, you know, it's simple. There's a need, we want to fill it.
Great.
Great.
We'll be happy to take any questions.
Excellent.
You're really close to Southeast Community College. Are you hoping to partner with them to help their students learn your expertise?
You know, truth be told, the majority of our staff at Lincoln, Nebraska, including myself, are SEC alumni. So while we have some first year students that are employed, second year students that are employed, so we, we have a great relationship with them and hope it just continues to improve.
It's great to hear.
Fantastic. Any other questions? Thank you.
Brian, can I have your last name though, please?
Modlin, M-O-D-L-I-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May we have testimony in support? Testimony in a neutral capacity? Testimony in opposition? Any staff questions? Applicant rebuttal? Excellent. Thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I move that we approve Change of Zone 24018.
Second, Edens.
Excellent. Who would like to go first?
This is a nice project next to where they're training a lot of the students that would fit into this project. So I think it's a good use of the land and a good location.
Great. Okay. Excellent. I agree also with my fellow commissioner, and it is nice to see a great infill project like this. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Motion approved, eight to zero.
And I move that we approve Special Permit 24030.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Approved, eight to zero.
Go ahead and have you continue, Shelley.
Next items for public hearing is, excuse me, lost my page here. 4.2 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24019, to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, Proposed One and Six Year Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program for Fiscal Years 2025 and 2026 to 2030. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No, there are not.
Are there any expertise communications or, that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No, I think we're good.
How are you guys this morning, this afternoon?
Afternoon.
Pam, can you pull the mic down a little bit? Yeah, thank you.
Feel like the mic is discriminating against short people.
Well, we are looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Can you see it on the screen? Are we good?
Almost.
Yeah.
We're almost there.
Yeah, we're just filling airtime right now. There you are.
Well, for the record, Pam Dingman, County Engineer 444 Cherry Creek Drive, Building C. This is the 11th time I've presented a one and six plan in front of the Planning Commission, which is awesome. I just wanted to talk in the intro today a little bit about, I'm the face that you guys see in county engineering, but there's actually many faces in county engineering, actually more than 100 faces in county engineering around the county stationed in 12 buildings over our 846 square miles that is Lancaster County. As you've previously heard me discuss, we have 289 bridges in Lancaster County or bridge length culverts. These are two of our new structures that I'm super pumped about, I'll talk a little later about. In addition to that, we have 6,900 culverts, including driveway culverts and approximately 1,000 box culverts that span less than 20 feet. And most of these box culverts were constructed with WPA, Work Progress Administration, funding in the 1920s and 1930s because that's what we did to put people back to work. So it wasn't necessarily the most efficient way to convey drainage. And there you see the photo where we have the waterfalls of Lancaster County that we are trying desperately to eliminate. We also have maintenance operations around the county. We have eight material storage areas, 13 buildings if you count our main campus in town. We do countywide tree removals and the right of way winter maintenance, and we have a rock quarry, who knew, that in all honesty, we currently use to hoard things that we probably shouldn't keep anymore. May store some rock there, too. In addition to my other responsibilities, I am responsible for maintaining all of the county vehicles, the repair and maintenance on those, as well as, that's right, the gas station lady, which is something that is interesting, not a typical assignment to a civil engineer. During the last year, I just wanted to draw a little attention to, we modified how we take care of subdivisions in Lancaster County, primarily going forward from this point, there'll be private roads. And the reason is, it's just impossible for us to continue to maintain those as a county entity. We currently maintain over 2,800 lots, and that is a, is a pretty big drain on our overall system because our tax system really isn't set up for residential housing.
Pam, I apologize. Were owners notified? Like, is there a way that you notified them?
So anybody who already existed will still be like in the, so, so we could end up with 4,000 lots?
Okay, got it.
Ultimately.
Okay.
But going forward, it'll be private roads. You know, the challenge with that is that if you have a $500,000 acreage house, which hey, used to be really big, but isn't so big anymore, right?
Right.
And you, you drill down on all the property taxes from that, what comes to the county engineer's office to maintain the road in front of your house is $50. And by the way, that $50 is for everything in the county. And the reality is, I can't drive a snowplow past your house two times a year, even two times a year, for that $50. So that's just a little bit of history with it.
Absolutely.
It took a long time to get there.
Yeah.
And it was not an awesome journey, but, but I think we're there. 25, 26 continued challenges, supply chain and labor shortages. An Allison transmission on a snowplow or dump truck is now at two-year wait. That creates a lot of issues for us as we span that purchase across three budget years in the future. In addition, we continue to have open positions that are very difficult to fill. We are getting a little bit of a break on escalation in construction prices, but I'll also note on this particular price index that they reinduct- also note on this particular price index that they re-indexed inflation and set it back so that that quarter one on 2021 was really like the zero line, right? So where you look at older graphs and see that 26-plus percent inflation and 11% the year after that, you know, this looks a little bit more like we're in the two-to-three range. It's still significant, we have gone down a little bit, but not nearly enough. I want to talk a little bit in a snapshot about what Lancaster County's culvert health looks like. This is our culvert dashboard. We inspect those on a rolling four-year basis. We currently have 775 pipe culverts that need to be replaced. That's today. We still experience 10 to 12 unexpected culvert failures a year. That endangers our overall system and its resiliency, it creates problems with farm-to-market, school-to-market, and general quality life for people who live in those areas. Good news if you're out in the county, so compared to that big bomb cyclone that we experienced, we've been trying to recover from, and we're not quite there yet, we're almost there, in 2019 to 2024. 2019, we had 58 structures that were considered scour critical or scour susceptible, we're down to 37 now. Also, I think it's super important to note in this next slide, our current closed bridges. So 2019, I came and visited you guys, and we were at 42, 42 closed bridges. Since then, we've been able to repair and replace, we're now down to two. It was my goal to stand in front of you this year and say, zero? But our Q, our bridge that kind of is in the southern part of Lancaster County there has had some construction issues with the right-of-way, and then our bridge up north is a new closure, sadly closed two weeks before the big flood, so that means it's not eligible for FEMA funding. This is our dashboard overall for bridge health, and it's much different numbers than you've seen in the past. You'll note that we're down to six scour critical bridges, really the first time you're going to see those under, you know, a single-digit, right? Under 10. You'll also notice bridges rated poor at nine countywide. And so for a long time, we hovered around that 28 to 32 number, and I just kept pushing bridges out, pushing bridges out, and we just stayed there. Because as we're trying to maintain these, of course, more start to fail, and it does take a while, you know, it's kind of like you're running up an escalator, it takes a while to start catching up. So what I think is super important to note, that in the last 10 years, 41 bridges or bridge-length box culverts have been replaced in Lancaster County. So we're sitting right at about 20% of the system. It's significant to get those bad bridges off the system. The dot showing on the map, our bridges currently rated poor in Lancaster County, that we'll continue to focus our maintenance efforts on to get it so that we don't have any bridges that are rated poor. Just a little bit about some of the projects that we did in this last budget year. This is Roca Road, which was a little bit of a nightmare for me for several years, three bad bridges, all built in the 1950s, all with the same construction methods, and by the way, the best one failed first. And that meant I knew I was due for a second one, and people say, well, why didn't you replace them all at the same time? And we simply didn't have the funding to do that. However, if you drive Roca Road now, you have three really nice structures. The structures showing here are S-180 and R-184, they are quad-barrel 12-by-12s, and just my engineer colleagues, if they were in the room, would say those are really big structures. We probably won't build a lot more structures as a box that are that big because we lose some efficiency and cost savings with it. We are looking this year at five bridge replacements, so X-129 down south by Wagon Train Lake, E-38 up by Malcolm by the ball fields, Q-110 currently, that's our last closed bridge from 2019. So it's been a five-year journey to get there. Pine Lake Road, a really significant connection in between the city limits and 148th Street. N-114, which we did in conjunction with the Parks Department, the bridge rail is actually meets the requirements for horses, and the day that I opened it up, I was super stoked to go out there, and there were horses on the bridge. So hopefully that, we're able to continue to use that. C-253 on Agnew Road by Raymond Central, and so we were really concerned, we lost a section of that bridge and had to do an emergency patch to it a year ago, and what we wanted to do is get that in and get it replaced in a plan, so that it didn't interfere with We also have been working on a number of box-to-pipe projects, so you see bridge-to-box and you see box-to-pipe. So these are those WPA-era box culverts that a pipe section is more efficient for and much cheaper. You may note that the old structure here doesn't have a lot of rock in front of it. Our new structures are designed to be resilient and reduce the overall velocity so that we stop making our channels wider and deeper. Just a quick slide to note, the commissioners did dedicate $2.5 million of their ARPA funds to our culvert crisis, and we did replace numerous culverts around the county with that money. There's good news and bad news to that, right? There were actually four planned projects with that money, and the money ran out at three. And I had secretly hoped that maybe the commissioners would have a little extra ARPA money, it doesn't look like that's going to happen for me, but rest assured, if it does happen in the next couple of weeks, I'm prepared. And I could easily spend another couple million dollars on pipe culverts. What are we going to look at for our culverts and bridges proposed in FY 2025? We're going to look at J-138, which is rated poor on the east side of Lincoln, W-104, also rated poor in southern Lancaster County, S-159, just a little north of Roca, is a WPA-era bridge that is on a spread footing like your house, not a good idea. Bridge F-181, just a little north of town, so kind of a few bridges all over. And then we also have a federal aid bridge, and so Arbor Road, just a little east of 27th Street, is a really large bridge over one of the Salt Creek tributaries. This is a federal aid project, and ultimately, if we can get this bridge replaced, it kind of opens up that whole northern edge from 27th to 70th. It would be nice to do some other projects in that area, but this is kind of the ugly big toe to say that we need to fix first. So we are really glad to have this, it's a federal aid, 80/20 split, so only 20% coming from your property tax dollars. We'll also be fixing, in particular, this box culvert, but several other box culverts where we know we have high velocity rates out of them, so that we can preserve those channels for the future. And then we will continue to have our channel repair projects at various locations around the county. This is where we're focusing on projects to repair channels so that the structures can be more resilient in the future. We'll be extending a few boxes, so it turns out, the engineers of the past, we were like super good stewards of taxpayer money, and we tried to build our bridges and our boxes like short, right? And we know now that that's not really a good idea. One, it's not a good idea for the safety of the public that's traveling on the road, and two, it's not necessarily a good idea to squeeze the drainage down and make it shoot through your structure faster. We have three proposed bridge deck projects, and so as you look at this picture, I think it's super important to point out, you see the pink, we have this super high-tech process, I don't know if anyone on the planning commission's ever got to do this before, and it's this like big stick with a chain, and you call it chaining the bridge, and you drag that chain around and you listen for that hollow sound. That's what we're marking in pink on this bridge, and that's how we know that area needs to be replaced. And my heart, in my heart, Mr. Joe, I wish there was a more technical way to approach that, but maybe next year. Overall, in addition to the projects I've discussed, we're looking at various bridges around the county that meet those criteria of poor or in need of maintenance. We're trying to keep bridges that are rated fair from becoming poor in order to stabilize our overall inventory. So here's our FY 2025 projects proposed, as well as our projects in years two through six proposed. And again, what we're really doing is we're focusing on those bridges that are rated poor that need to be replaced, and those bridges that need maintenance in order not to become poor. Lancaster County's roads, so we have 43 miles of dirt, that means it's never had rock or material put on, it's never been graded for modern standards, Model Ts probably drove on it back in the day. We have a little over 1,000 miles of gravel in Lancaster County, and we have a lot of people on our gravel, so it's difficult to maintain these. We have 23 motor grader operators out on those roads every day, and you kind of, if you kind of calc that out in your head, it's really just not enough to get done what we need to get done. We have just a little under 300 miles of pavement. So what does that mean? This is the stat that I've brought forward to the commission for a number of years. When we have an ADT north of 300 or north of 400, we know that we can no longer economically maintain those sections of road. In fact, we know that it costs us about $150,000 a year to maintain a mile once we get in those ranges, or we could pave it every five years. That kind of hurts my soul a little bit, to know that we're just throwing away maintenance to kind of just stay existing. In addition to that, these corridors become very dusty, and there's a significant quality of life issue. So, super good news, this year, we have taken one mile off of that inventory, and that was the mile between 98th Street and Holdridge, and we're currently working on another very large 98th Street project that hopefully will be complete in the near future. So what does this look like? In our previous year, we worked on 14 miles of engineering, three miles of grading and paving, and approximately 71 miles of pavement preservation. Same thing as the bridges, we're trying to keep these slabs maintained. Once you get to the point where you're counting potholes, you've lost the battle. So you want to keep that surface maintained for as long as possible. So what are we looking at in the future as we go forward? This is kind of our metric, we rate all pavement on a 100-point scale, if you're less than 80, we say it needs some sort of maintenance. We want to get it closer to 80 than 50, right? So we currently have about 45, 46 miles that need maintenance. Why is that significant? Because I've come to you before and said that we're just under 100, right? So when we can get that down by 50%, then what are we doing? We're saving that maintenance money to do more paving. So it's kind of shifting around the money to overall make the system better. What does it look like proposed for next year? Just a little under 14 miles of engineering, just about a half a mile of grading and paving. We're still working on our pavement preservation program, we kind of wait to see what the winter does to us. If we get a really nice winter, we don't have as much, if we get a really harsh winter, we have a little more. We're looking at 22 and a half miles of right-of-way acquisition, that's right, 22 and a half miles of right-of-way acquisition in the future, as well as a major emphasis to continue on that maintenance. And I joke when I present publicly a lot that no engineer ever gets an award for maintenance, right? It's just not as shiny and awesome as some other stuff. But there should be awards for maintenance, because that's what really helps us make our system resilient. So I want to talk about, a little bit about our federal aid projects. This is a map that shows our federal aid projects around Lancaster County. Probably until five years ago, I would have brought this list to you and it would have been really short, like none. And it takes a long time to get some of these into the system. With some of the new bipartisan infrastructure bills, stuff, we've been able to get stuff to move a little quicker, but not necessarily a lot quicker because you got to get through the system. What do these projects around the county mean to Lancaster County? And I'm just going to kind of page through them. What they mean in short, in short, the eight-second soundbite, $65 million of improvements to Lancaster County's roads and a bridge in the next five years. $65 million, when really what we've been putting into roads has been about $1 million every other year, so it's significant to us. If we look at that, what is that? Saltillo, I feel like I've been talking about it for eight years, because I have. Getting it through the process has not been easy, and the state actually asked us to hold until we were done with the Beltway, so we actually put our pencils down, and then we couldn't pick our pencils back up until the Beltway was open, which was painful. Saltillo started off being somewhere around a $5 million project at a 90/10 split. I think by the time we get to it, it's going to end up being more like a $14 or $15 million project, still with a 90/10 split. We're excited to get going on that, we're currently in the evaluation of the right-of-way period of it, so we're closer. We're currently working on 98th Street, Old Chaney to A, that was an 80/20 federal aid split, but we split R-20 with the city of Lincoln, and in addition to that, we also constructed a roundabout for the development that came online, so that theoretically, I'm hoping, I mean, we can all have hope and a dream, right? That we can open that section of road and not have to shut it down for new development again.
Excellent.
Theoretically. I mean, you got to have goals, right? We'll see if I make it. If I don't, I'm going to be really sad. 98th Street, A to O, will be one of the first sections that we construct as a suburban section, so that means that we'll have the island and 18 feet of concrete pavement on either side. We've had the public meeting for that, that is also an 80/20 project, and we will also be splitting the cost of that in partnership with the city of Lincoln. And by the way, that's new for both of these projects, and we're super excited about it. Intersection improvements to 148th and Holdridge, hey, 148th Street is really the poor man's east Beltway right now.
Mm-hmm.
It's a hot mess, it has, it's probably within 10% of the number of the traffic that Saltillo had on it before the south Beltway started. And the thing that makes me sad about that is, we're kind of headed to the same spot again, right? And so, hopefully not, but it's looking like it'll be really similar. Also an 80/20 project. South 68th Street from First to Stagecoach, we've had the public meeting for that, we're in the process with the feds, we're hoping to get that one going. I do think this will also end up probably being around a $12 million project. Fletcher Avenue, super exciting, federal aid, we put it through with some of the funding that comes out of the MPO. In addition to that, we talked Congressman Flood into carrying that as an earmark project, and so we did receive HUD economic development money for it.
Nice.
Now, although we received it, we received it about six months ago, I've yet to get an agreement for it, and so we're still trying to figure all that out, but we know it's there and we're excited to be moving that forward. Northwest 56th Street, also an 80/20 split, right on the west side of the new high school up there, and so we're in process with that, and you're going to see a lot of these projects come very quickly. Like, they're all in the hopper, but we just have to get them kind of across the finish line. And then I'm really excited to talk about North 14th Street. And so although we studied South 68th Street and Saltillo Road for almost four or five years before we got that, 90% funding, the 80% funding, and I kept saying to the state, hey, why are we proving up on this? Because we all know this road is bad. So why are we spending $100,000 in tax money doing engineering studies to prove up? And they heard me, and I really appreciate that, because we don't always know if we're heard when we say things like, hey, this doesn't make sense. And they came back and said, okay, we're going to start a program that if you have more than 1,000 cars a day on a paved slab, and the pavement lane is less than 11 feet, we're going to fund that to be widened and improved. And I kind of had that, like, I was a little skeptical. Mr. Campbell's a little skeptical. What can I say? We, the program came out, we got the email at nine o'clock in the morning, we dropped a cost estimate on the state at about 10:30, and before noon, we had $12 million funding for that corridor. So it is working, it is going to be significant, and we're super stoked to get this corridor, like, brought up to modern standards for the Raymond Central kiddos. And then we have this 68th Street north, we're trying to get this caught up with the south of Hickman piece, I don't know if we're going to make it, but we won't make it if we don't try, and it's the same sort of thing, widening that out to get a safer section. This is what our program looks like for 2025, and the roads that we're going to continue to work on, both with engineering, construction, and right-of-way acquisition in that federal aid process. This is what our road program looks like for the next years, the two through six years, significant improvements to Lancaster County and the overall connectivity. And then I also want to be sure that I mention that we did get a BRIT grant, which is a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant. So we're studying, outside the three-mile zone of the city of Lincoln, we're studying the channel geomorphology and hydraulics and hydrology around all of our bridge structures in order to ensure that they're resilient in the future. And so Lincoln, of course, has done that with their big drainage studies, the county has not, and this is our first step at coming in and getting an overall plan for Lancaster County. So we're excited for that opportunity, that's also an 80/20. That's also an 80-20 grant. And then recently, we received a Safe Roads For All grant, where we're going to study an overall safety plan, update our overall safety plan for the county, as well as study some things that we can implement on South 68th Street and 148th Street to improve safety. So with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
I may have misread it, but on one of the charts in your report, it was showing significant funds in 24 for, from the federal government, but zero in three or four of the lane items for 25. Why, why that?
So when we look at those, you know, when you work with the federal government, you're beholden to them. So it's been a little awkward and sometimes there's surprises. And I would like to say that Ms. Jones in the planning department has done an awesome job when we've had surprises, that we all worked together to try to get it handled. Like Saltillo recently had a surprise and, and that was that the cost had gone up. And so, the feds wanted it to go back through the total process, which if we were on time, that could have caused a six-month delay. And those are the surprises. So you don't always know where that money's going to land, and that's just where we're forecasting the money to land. It's interesting, too, three years ago now, I did convince the commissioners to set up a separate fund, so that the money for the federal aid projects is separately funded outside of my regular budget.
Got it.
If that makes sense. So we have a sinking fund for these, so that like when, hey, when we bid 98th Street and the bill came from the state, then we drew from that fund. And so that's also helping us be more resilient as we move to the future.
Thank you. That makes more sense.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else on this side?
I do.
Yes.
Pam, when you do a street widening project, I noticed like the 68th, Hickman, the shoulder's about that big. Are you accommodating for bicycle lane traffic when you do widen the street?
That is an excellent question. So, currently, what I'll say is, not really, no. It doesn't mean that we aren't still trying to get there, but I'm not there currently. So, right now, what it will be is, right now, it's a, it's a 22-foot top and there's almost no shoulder to it. So that's why when you drive that corridor, it feels, it's a little frightening. I mean, you might not want to sneeze because you might go off the road a little bit. But that being said, so what we're focusing on with our improvements is a 28-foot top. There's a 28-foot top and then intersection improvements. That would mean that, you know, bicyclists technically would have six more feet, but, you know, it's not a separate bicycle lane.
Or even a line, even a line at 12 or so to...
Yeah. I mean, it's, that's not, I mean, that's not what we've been able to receive funding for. And it would be too big of a lift for us currently to pay for that with property tax dollars. And again, that doesn't mean that we've stopped asking, we just don't have a yes yet.
Will they have rumble strips?
Um, I'm going to have to like do this really quick. We do have rumble strips on that project, right? I'm pretty sure we do. Yeah, pretty sure. That's our standard design section now.
I would only ask...
And I know the bicyclists hate the rumble strips, too.
Well, a short rumble strip with a separate area to the right of it for bicycles. So the rumbles would alert a car that they're veering, but not having rumbles go all the way across.
So without being too technical, I'm going to say, rumble strips 12 inches, right, is the standard. And then there'd probably be, and you, you did this, and I'm going to say like, this, like probably 12 inches on the other side of the rumble strips. There'll still be some earth on the other side. And again, I'll emphasize, we're still asking, we just haven't had a yes yet.
Okay.
Good questions, good questions. Anything here? Well, I can tell you that bridges jazz me. I love bridges. And so, the work that I've drove, driven by, I know I can't help myself. Like, some of the interstate bridges, super cool designs lately. So I've really appreciated watching the work that you and your staff have been doing on the roads I've been driving on. And that 14th Street, as you drive in to Lincoln, the beautiful view of the Capitol, it'll be nice to have a little bit more room so you don't, like you said, veer just a skosh while you're enjoying the City of Lincoln skyline. I think, any other questions from us? Okay. May we hear testimony in support? Testimony in a neutral capacity? Testimony in opposition? Any other staff questions? Okay.
I do have a question for the applicant that I forgot.
Yes.
No, that's out of my mind.
Not banging.
Never mind.
There, I'll say one more thing. So when I see my maintainers in my area, because I'm our rural representative, I usually pull over and take a picture and share it with my friend in Ohio, because we have this whole gravel road discussion. And so, they're doing a great job also. They market well, they watch for us traffic-wise, so it's really nice.
I, I can't remember it.
Okay, thank you.
You can email me.
All right, well, yeah.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Last year, we had no one show up to our official 1-6 road hearing. And so, I just want to emphasize, although we've made a ton of progress, we still have a long way to go and it's a continuous mission, and I'm hoping that we can continue to have the support of the public.
I, I do remember what the question was, and that is, from public comments that you get into your office and such, are, are, are you basing some of these projects on feedback from the public?
We are basing some of the projects on feedback from the public, but more often in the case where we're using HSIP funds, so Highway Safety Improvement Funds, we're basing it on the actual data of the crashes in those corridors, so.
That's valid.
And then, and then also, we're basing a lot of our decisions on how much traffic.
Right.
How much traffic is in that area and does the road still meet the conditions to be a usable surface, given the amount of traffic?
That sounds smart.
That makes a lot of sense. Great job. Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Now I won't have to email you.
I mean, we, just so you know, I don't really ever get too many calls that say like, don't pave my road, right? I get a lot of calls where I'll look up, I'll look up the data and sadly, it's, you know, like 75 or 100 cars a day for that ADT. And, and then, we tell that person that it's probably unlikely their road will be paved in the near future.
Yeah.
And it just, it just is what it is.
Yep.
Well, thanks for you and your staff's hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Here, here.
I'd move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Shelley.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 240019.
Second, Edens.
Any discussion additional?
Yes.
I wanted to really highlight the need for deferred maintenance. I kind of do that during my day and it doesn't get all bright and shiny.
Right.
But if it fails, that's on the front page of the paper. So to have that much of a backlog and to keep them good, that we're not seeing that, oh, we had a catastrophic failure here and here and here, kudos to your group. And if we could just put sponsorship on bridges, maybe. I just wanted to thank you for your hard work. Because I know how important it is to keep it not catastrophic. Like, we're doing the best we can with limited funds and I get that every day, so, kudos. Thank you.
Like soccer jerseys, right? Like, put a...
Yeah. This bridge is sponsored by...
I just wanted to say, I appreciate your work. I know it's probably a, a never, feel like a never-win battle, right? It's always something and I think the infrastructure of our roads is critical to the growth of our city. So I appreciate you and the work your team is doing for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Thanks for the report, thanks for all that you and your staff are doing. This is excellent work. We appreciate it.
We do work very hard and I would like to thank my staff there. You know, we have 100 people plus that are very dedicated to seeing improvements all across the system.
Thank you. Shelley?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Motion approved, A to zero.
Okay, Shelley, why don't you take us through the fives?
Okay. And next on the agenda is for administrative action only. First item is going to be 5.1A Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24004 to amend the Lincoln-Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from urban destiny residential to commercial on property generally located on the northwest corner of South 70th Street and Nebraska Parkway. Item 5.1B changes Zone 24003 from AGR Agricultural Residential District to O3 Office District on property generally located on the northwest corner of South 70th Street and Nebraska Parkway. And associated, item 5.1C Use Permit 24003 to allow a use permit in the O3 Office District, Sony District, District for approximately 51,000 square feet of commercial floor area with waivers to setbacks, also on property generally located on the northwest corner of South 70th Street and Nebraska Parkway. These items were carried over from the September 18th hearing for action, and this is just for action only, as the motion to recommend approval by the Planning Commission failed to obtain the necessary five affirmative votes to move it forward. So this is for action only today, no public hearing. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No, there are not.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information and learn while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No, there are not. May we have a motion? Or do you need clarification?
We've got motions on the table. I mean, I had moved to approve all three of these, and I just want to go through some of the things that I've developed since then.
We do need to have a motion and a second again.
Okay.
And then, we'll go into discussion, like you said.
Got it.
And it's been advised that it would be prudent for us to repeat what we've said before, if you so feel.
Then I would move to approve 5.1, which is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24004.
Second, Rodenberg.
Okay. Let's talk, let's talk...
Do you want to talk about all three of them?
Yeah, I think so.
Talk about all of them.
After our, our meeting two weeks ago and reviewing everything, I went back with the packet that, that they had handed out to us and was examining it. And then also, I drive that area almost every day. And it does not make sense, I agree with the planning department, it does not make sense for any entrance off of 70th Street. That's right at the point of the curve that the state demanded to have as much of a 90-degree crossing with, at that time, Nebraska Highway 2. And, and then, I, I drove down the end of Pine Lake Road. Pine Lake Road is far better improved than 70th Street is. I drove down to 84th Street. 84th Street has all the right-turn lanes and the left-turn lanes, everything's there. And you come back to 70th Street and 70th Street has the two left-turn lanes. But the applicant is willing to put in a right-turn lane from the north on 70th to get onto 70th going west. The other three do not have right-turn lanes. And I would highly encourage, if there's some way that we can do so, for the city to, the transportation, to get that on their list, to get right-turn lanes on both the east and west of Nebraska Parkway and going south on 70th. And that doesn't exist now. And so, I've, I've looked at where the, the deceleration lane would be put in that. It, it makes a lot of sense. When I look at the land up there, there was a resident there for a long period of time. They were set way back on the property. But you're not going to get 14 to 19 residents on there, based upon the concerns we've heard from the people in that development to the north, that developed as acreages originally and has never been paved to really county or city standards. It's just been paved to the residential needs and patched accordingly. So I think the, I don't think you're going to see the homes built in that area, ever. And this is an infill-type situation, and I think having the medical plaza there makes a lot more sense than some of the other options that would be available. So I will continue to vote to support what's been proposed for this development.
Okay. Commissioner?
I also voted yes on this. I'd like to correct a statement I made. I was talking about traffic between 33rd and 27th, having a dedicated merge lane. That's actually between Pioneers as it merges in, and then also, also on 27th Street, you can merge onto Capitol or Nebraska Parkway. And also on 56th, you can do a rolling merge on. And I wonder, I mean, the addition of a right-turn lane off of 70th to go west is vital and the developers are willing to put that in, I would, I don't know if there's room there, but to have that similar merge where you don't have to come to a complete stop, you just look in your rearview and make sure that you can merge safely onto Nebraska Parkway would be good. And I also, you know, the highest and best use for that property, the developers did look at, and they entertained and they solicited residential builders to come in and nobody was interested. And the neighborhood nearest that piece of property is all in favor of this. So for those, oh, and also, we were shown a picture of then Highway 2, which is now Nebraska Parkway, with eight semis on it. Those semis have gone away. I drive this route every day myself, and I mentioned two weeks ago that the stoplights are timed such that there's no sense in exceeding the speed limit. You'll just come screeching up to a red light. And if you go maybe two miles slower than the speed limit, you can hit every green going both ways, for the most part, depending on the time of day. So I, I think that, I know the, the county, or I'm sorry, the, the city planning recommended denial because it's an expressway. I think with the, the 18-wheelers no longer using that, I think that it's been a, a nice road that could accommodate that one access point. So I will continue to support this.
Okay. Who would like to go next?
Okay, great.
I'll add that the right-turn lane, I agree, is necessary. I am on that 70th Street going south, turning onto Highway 2 to go west daily as well. And so that right-turn lane is absolutely necessary. I'm not against that. I, I think we heard from L T U that this intersection is definitely a high priority of needing to be fixed. You can see on the transportation safety, there's been 102 accidents at this intersection the last 10 years. And so, I think that's my biggest fear about having this construction right now and without L T U being able to fix it first before something goes in, where we might be adding additional traffic, additional cars because of customers that are going to this office space, employees that are going to this office space. I was trying to think that if I was an employee trying to go here, how would I get there? If I'm coming from the west on Highway 2, I'd have to technically not do a U-Tour. I'd have to turn... I'd have to turn north onto 70th, somehow get to a U-turn to come back to Highway 2 to turn right to get into where I work. And I just thought even that efficiency needs to be looked at. I just think there's a lot of questions regarding safety and flow of this intersection, and how, how that right-turn lane and how the entrance to this space is going to align with the goals of that intersection. Another thing I looked at was, in testimony, there was talk about the need for medical and the need for infill, and I agree with that. Unfortunately, I tried to look at the Place Matters map that the Community Health Endowment puts together every year, and this part of town is not needing medical. The medical needs, like my fellow Planning Commissioner said, the medical needs are up north. And I, you know, that's, that's also part of, I know that goes into our comprehensive plan and what the city planners talk about, and I think that's partly why they recommend denial. I said safety, another part of safety is if I'm, in my opinion, a lot of drivers don't understand when you turn left, you should be turning into the nearest lane. And so if I'm coming from the other direction and trying to turn right onto the same highway, and then we, this person's trying to get to this office space, and this person's trying to get, I'm, again, safety is like the number-one issue with this plan right now. And I do feel for the neighbors. I personally lived on a dead end my whole life, and then they punched it through, and that really was crappy, but I, I really would love the neighbors to think about, if that dead end was pushed through, would you want office space that might have 1,000 daily trips by people in and out, because you've got employees coming in and out, visitors to the medical center in and out? Or housing? And I guess I can trust my expertise here that housing's not going to work on that space, and I'm all for office space, I just don't know if now's the right time, and if that is going to be the safest option with that right-turn lane. So those are my comments for now. I might have more later.
Excellent, thank you. Who would like to go next?
Can I just add one thing? I'm a person that normally never goes against Planning Department's recommendations. But after studying this, and as Rich said, no residential builders were willing to come in and take a project on in this space, and with it being part of the city, we've been on an infill concern, and that just all adds to my support for this project.
Thank you. Okay. So, again, when I was thinking about this, like you, my fellow commissioners have discussed previously and discuss now, it definitely, from a safety standpoint, feels a little like a chicken-and-egg issue. You know, will the 70th intersection get improved if there's not a push? We did have the state of Nebraska approve the deviation in front of us, but I'm, like Commissioner Campbell, I don't like to go against what the staff has researched and put all that effort into, and the denial. It's really a hard sell from a logic standpoint, because there's a lot of issues as we look at exits, how to get in and out. The positive is that deceleration lane, and then as you start to move into Lincoln, it starts to become more development, more access on and off the road, access onto major intersections, those types of things. And we do see the expressway changing in the future based on our logic of how we're moving around Lincoln with the bypass and those types of things. So I'm, I am going to stay supporting the motion and voting yes, and do ask that we get this roadway and intersections along this roadway stepped up in our Lincoln process for improving roadways.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Shelley?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
No.
Ebert.
No.
Edens.
No.
Fight.
No.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Motion failed four to four, due to not obtaining five votes in approval.
I think it's important for us to move this on to the City Council. And so I will change my vote to no, only to get it to the City Council. And let them look at it again, from their perspective. But we, the attorneys going to help us here.
Get through that dick.
Yeah, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, what the charter requires is a five affirmative votes, and so if you want to take a different motion, I don't think you can just change your vote. There needs to be a second motion to deny the matter, and then take a vote on that, on that second motion.
Okay, so you would have to, we're at four to four now on this.
Right now, there's been a motion, it's four to four, there's no action taken by the Planning Commission. That doesn't mean the Planning Commission can't make a next motion on the same 5.1 to deny the matter and take a new vote on that basis.
May we entertain a motion, please? Yes?
I move to deny Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24004.
Second, Fight.
Any other discussion on this motion?
Now that it's back, I am going to talk.
Now that it's back, I do have something to say. So I think we just got out of a presentation on the challenges of budget for LTU. Right? I think this is an opportunity, and I get the safety issue, it is a concern, it's a major intersection, but it's an opportunity for the public-private partnership, right? Where there is a contribution to help us in our roads, where the city can't necessarily do it at this point. And, and I think, like other fellow commissioners said, I typically don't go against, you know, our Planning Department, because they do a great job, but this is an opportunity to fill an area of concern. And so I would, you know, again, I'm saying yes, because I do think it's important that we do contribute to the city in different ways, and this is being done by a private, you know, private way, and it's an opportunity for us to at least progress it. So I'm going to, you know, keep that vote on my end.
And I hope the City Council reviews our public hearings and our discussions as they approach this, because I totally agree with Commissioner Lorenzo. So, and I'm going to vote no, only to just move it forward at this point.
But we're going to vote yes.
You're voting yes to deny.
I still support doing it.
You would vote yes to the denial.
Yes.
Or no to...
Yeah, yes to the denial, just to move it, move it forward, even though I totally support it.
Whatever you voted last time, except dick.
I think it's important to note that while we do want to look for public-private collaboration and partnership, that when we do that, that does not mean that we minimize our standards, or we compromise the integrity of design. And so if there is a better way to build the mousetrap, I want to see the better way to build the mousetrap. And if that means that we wait a little longer and wait for a more, a more obvious public-private collaboration, then we should do so. But we should not rush off to put in a right lane simply because someone else is paying for it. I do think that we need to step back and look at the anticipated design needs, also keeping in mind that that's only one necessary turn lane. There were three other lanes that need to be anticipated, and what happens if we put this block in place and then have to go back and change a bad design? And by bad design, I mean form follows function. I, I did learn that much in architectural theory, right? But we don't want to put this lane in place and then have to go back and, you know, again, because we didn't build the best mousetrap we could at the time, have to reallocate all this all over again. That's why I am going to continue to deny this, and, you know, perhaps City Council can make, can make an assessment.
And I would be interested, at first, the state who has the, the a or nay on that access to Nebraska Parkway, said no, but then they changed it to, yes, it's allowed. So what we're voting is basically overriding their decision. If we were to approve it, I would be interested in knowing what it was that changed to allow that, and we didn't have that information.
I think that's a really good point, Rich, is that that information was missing, and maybe that information City Council can ask for to help inform their decision.
Mm-hmm.
Two seconds, I want to look at one more thing here.
Sorry. While she's looking, with the right-turn lane, I'm even more, I mean, I agree with you, the turns on 56, like you said, that just kind of flow in and Pioneers into the highway flows really well, it's, I feel like it's safe, I feel like I have plenty of time to get over if I have to go from there all the way over to turn. There's a slight hill as you are going west on Highway 2 when you hit 70th. So my biggest concern for people turning right is just that their line of sight for what's coming. And we haven't really talked about that, but that's back to Maribor, I mean, Maribor's points of just how much has been gone into designing a very safe intersection where this can happen. Again, I'm not against this project at all, I just, I just don't know about the timing, and I want to make sure it's done right for the travelers that hit that intersection on a daily basis.
Thank you. One other thing that I'd like to look at in the future as we move forward is the entire 70th Street intersection. When you look at that and how it curves around, and where utilities are and all of those, I mean, that whole corner is a challenge. I mean, and you mentioned the number of wrecks, and you talked about that. And so maybe as we move forward, also, the entire group can work together with the property owners on all four corners. Okay, Shelley?
Okay, this motion is for denial now of CPA 24004. Ball.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
No.
Joy.
No.
Motion passed.
I move denial of change of zone 24003.
Second, Fight.
Any other discussion? Shelley?
Ball.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
No.
Joy.
Wait a minute. Are we at five right now, Shelley? We're the next one on the...
No, 5B, 5.
At five.
I understand. What, how many yes votes do we have?
There's five yeses.
We are already at five. Okay, no?
Motion passed.
I move denial of use permit 24003.
Second, Cruz.
Sorry. I was floating around in my world.
Did you get distracted by a map?
Double negatives.
Okay. Ball.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
No.
Joy.
No.
Motion passed, five to three.
Okay. Two seconds here. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second, Edens. Shelley?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fight.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
We are adjourned.